Before I open up the meeting to public comment, this is going to be a long, long, long meeting tonight, so all the board members are prepared for a little snack later on. So I don't know what everybody else is going to do, but prepare for a long meeting. No?
No, dude, that's Long Island.
All right, we'll open the meeting up to public comment. Public comment, okay, we'll close the public comment. Tonight we have a special presentation from our design team. Tom Rizzen-Haler from CS Arch is here and he's going to give us an overview of our upcoming capital project. Go over it, Tom.
Thank you very much. Good evening, again, my name is Tom Rizzen-Haler. I'm an executive principal at CS Arch, right here in Newburgh. I have George Crawford with me. He's one of our consultants for civil engineering. And George is with the Chazen Companies. So I'm going to talk a little bit, just a brief agenda, going to go through a little bit of the background. We really haven't presented to the board, and I'm hoping we're going to do this on a more regular basis, maybe even monthly if the board would like. Let me not break anything. I want to go through the background of, you know, where we are in the process, the proposed scope of work, the pre-designed schedule, and then talk about the schedule moving forward through design and into implementation. So hopefully the board remembers the background. There was a vote in May with the budget where the voters approved a project, a capital project of $8 million. We estimated that, based on a total project budget of $8 million, we're going to be able to do about $6.5 million of actual hard construction. And then, of course, as you know, with every project, there are things called incidental expenses. Those include things like AD fees, testing during construction, project oversight, a lot of different things, bonding expenses, legal fees. All of those things are incidental to the actual construction. And based on just a 2080 split, which is pretty typical, we estimate about 1.4 million, almost 1.5 million in those incidental expenses. Scope of the project, of course, where did these items come from? Some of them came through and were identified in your BCS process based on established need. Some of the work was things that didn't get done with the previous capital project, the one that's just finishing up. And then some of the work also, because remember, if we're doing site work and things of that nature, we have to make sure it's attached to a building project. So some of the work we do to make sure that you are getting all of the building aid from the state education department. Everyone with me so far?
Yeah.
And you can ask questions during any point in time. You don't have to wait until the end. So let's talk about the proposed scope of work. So the $8 million was divided into a series of lists. We're going to start with what I'll call the district-wide things. Things are going to happen at each of the buildings. Exterior lighting, of course, for safety and security, as well as energy efficiency. So we're going to be looking at replacing all the hard packs you have at the buildings. And we're going to install new LED fixtures. Of course, these will be a lot more energy efficient and certainly will provide a lot more light around. And we're going to choose those fixture locations. Some of them might be in new locations to make sure that we're providing better coverage around the buildings. Again, it's a, it's a safety and security issue. Door keying for faculty and staff accessibility. We're going to look at a new key access system for interior doors and a new key tree. Who can access which doors and when. We're going to look at a hierarchy for room access. And this will all be worked out with Pete Miller and with the district, of course. Discuss who has which privileges, all that will be part of the process during construction. And then we're going to update existing door hardware to meet those new key requirements. Here at the central administration wing, we have a couple different types of units that serve this area of the building. Some of it is served by ductless split units and some is served by rooftop units. We're going to be removing all that equipment, we're going to be replacing it. And the reason for this is because it's not really providing adequate heating and cooling and ventilation in these areas. So we're going to replace that with new rooftop units. And those are going to serve all the office spaces for heating and cooling. And then in addition to that, we're going to reuse the fin tube. That'll work in conjunction with the rooftop units in these areas.
What's a fin tube?
It's the radiation that's along the window, that's called fin tube. It's a radiant tube that runs, hot water runs through it, and it has fins on it.
Oh, okay.
And the fins generate heat and disperse it adequately. And then, of course, all of this will be integrated with the building management system, the BMS system, so that you have adequate control. And again, it'll promote additional efficiencies with those systems. At the high school, maybe I'll let George take this one?
Sure. So at the high school, we've got three projects we're looking at. First project is in the tennis court area. It used to be a set of tennis courts that you guys used. It's been used for a couple of purposes for a while now. And we're looking to return that to an actual athletic sports area. So there's some fencing, some drainage, and of course, the surface itself needs to be repaired. We're working with Peter right now on that. Throughout, earlier this month, taking a look at that specifically. Second project is the bus loop area. It's actually probably going to entail a little bit more area than what's shown right now. But we're looking at the bus loop and the parent-student drop-off procedures that are actually happening here. There's a, there's a little bit of efficiency that could be improved upon. And if we're going to spend the time to improve the bus loop area, we want to make sure that we're making it the best it can be. The last project is, we have a set of sewer pumps that service the high school here. And we're looking to upgrade those pump stations. Those pumps have been there for a while, there's been some repairs over the years. But it's really, it's a good time to get in there and put in new pumps, new controls, and a new alarm system on that. Again, we've taken a preliminary look at all of these components. So we're on the point now where we're starting to put together some preliminary plans. We'll come back to the district with this.
Library renovations, of course. We're going to be replacing the translucent panel spotlight system in the library. Along with that, we're going to be looking at new interior lighting fixtures. Right now, the lighting fixtures run along the structure that's in between the translucent panels. It's not very good lighting for the library. So we want to, when we're looking at a whole system replacement such as this, we want to make sure that we look at the associated systems and we can make a complete improvement to that area. And then, of course, we're going to try to look at ways to provide daylight harvesting. So then again, we can be as energy efficient as possible. And what I'll say is we're presenting, we're going to present options to the district for how to approach this project. It's not just going to be a one-for-one replacement. There are a lot of other products other than translucent panels like this, this happens to be a Cal-Wall system, that we might want to consider, that might provide additional longevity for the district. And I'm not sure, you know, we might present options that don't have the entire thing being translucent. So it gives us a little bit of better light control. And it also might, you know, spruce it up a little bit. We want to, you know, we want to make it a little more architecturally interesting. And so, you know, we're going to present some options, certainly looking at the cost parameters of each to make sure that we're staying within our budget parameters. That's certainly important. From the auditorium, we're going to replace the existing curtains. Obviously, they would be fire resistant. And new projector and screen integrated to your audio and video controls. The HVAC, again, a lot of issues with inadequate heating and cooling in the ventilation systems. We're going to provide some upgrades. We're going to do some tie-ins into the BMS, replacing some of the existing HVAC dampers. We're going to improve the heating for some of the storage spaces located in both boys' and girls' locker rooms. This is something that was brought to us early on. And then you can see, this is the switch rack that's located actually kind of within the boiler room currently. And we're going to be looking at isolating this with fire-rated construction and providing a new ductless split system to provide cooling to that area. This will, again, create a lot of longevity with that very sensitive switch equipment. So we certainly want to protect that and give it as long a lifespan as possible. At the bus garage, we're looking at, you know, you have had over time a loss of communication between buildings during power failures, so we're looking at putting in a generator. So that'll involve obviously putting in an equipment pad, a new generator to provide full coverage for the entire building and the connection of the generator to the existing propane tank located outside. George, I think I'll let you take this one?
At the middle school, you have a tennis court down in the lower area. It's actually in fairly good shape, although the photos may not depict that right now. But overall, it's actually pretty good. So we're going to look to do a little bit of resurfacing on the surface area. You've got some minimal cracks. There's some fencing around the exterior we want to replace. And then the backboard and hoops themselves will be replaced. But the posts and the subbase of the system are in good shape, so that's good.
And again, similar to previous, we're going to be looking at a generator at this middle school facility as well. Again, to provide that reliability of communication and keeping it online during times when we have a power failure.
And when you say keeping online, you would mean like the main office area?
Well, we're going to-
Areas of the kitchen?
It's a very good question. We're going to talk about, you know, and we're starting the dialogue about what loads we would actually put on that generator. Because that affects how we size it. It also, you know, so certainly emergency systems, fire and life safety systems are paramount. You know, then you're going to want to get into, you know, freezers and, you know, coolers for the kitchen. So we're going to have to have a discussion over which of those loads that get transferred to the generator.
It'd be similar to the high school and middle school?
Yeah.
I mean, the high school and elementary school, what we did there.
Sounds good. Yeah. Okay, so then at the middle school also, you've got, you know, obsolete pneumatic systems at high school. So we're going to be removing all the remaining pneumatic system from the middle school. And then we're going to be putting in new electronic or DDC controls that are tied into your energy management system. Again, here, emergency lighting upgrades. You have a lot of outdated battery-powered systems, and we're going to be tying those in to the new emergency light fixtures and providing additional coverage throughout the building as well, where you don't currently have coverage. A lot of older buildings didn't put emergency lighting such as, like in stairwells because of fact that it wasn't required in the code, it is now. So we're going to be expanding that so that we can provide that total and complete safety, you know, out the building during the emergency. At the elementary school, again, some HVAC inadequacies as far as your heating, cooling, and ventilation systems. So we're going to replace the existing unit ventilators in the classrooms. So those are the boxes up against the window wall, the dryer in, heat or cool it. In this case, it's heating it. So we've, I've shown a little diagram here because depending on where you are in the building, depends on what those units actually complete. So the areas in the red are just existing UVs, they'll be replaced with new UVs. The area in blue are areas that don't have unit ventilators right now. So we're going to be putting unit ventilators in those rooms to provide ventilation as required. And then the areas in green have UVs that are also combined heating and cooling. And so we'll have to talk about, do we extend the cooling to the other unit ventilators throughout the building? So we cool everything as you're dealing with those lower rooms in the green. And then, of course, new rooftop units serving the classroom for ventilation. And then, again, everything gets tied into your, to your integrated building management system. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about the schedule. So we've been working for quite some time to pull all this together. So, you know, we started, we did our initial walkthroughs middle of July. As you know, to complete a project like this, we have to do a lot of field investigation. We have to understand what the existing conditions are within the buildings so that we can design appropriate solutions for each of the pieces of work or scope of work. July 31st, we completed our building information modeling. So we developed these buildings, we actually do develop three-dimensional models, what we call BIM models, that we utilize to prepare the contract documents. So those were started in July 31st and we completed them on August 12th. It does take us a bit, you know, it's new buildings, we're doing it from scratch. We had some initial walkthroughs on the 15th with both our architectural and our MEP staff. We have in-house engineers that also walk these buildings and did their own survey respective to their work. We had drawing sets, we began developing the drawing sets on August 16th. And September 11th, we sent a project set of the drawings to Mr. Miller, I believe, for review. That was the initial review. We masked out a full set of what the documents are going to be, and then we start to infill the detailed information from that. And then September 21st, we had walkthroughs and site surveillance by Chazen. Chazen did a series of walkthroughs relative to understanding what's happening with the ingress egress, the pedestrian, behavioral traffic movements, et cetera, so that they could design those features and options for the front of the buildings while he's looking at the tennis courts and the proper improvements. So moving forward, so schematic design, we're nearing completion of our schematic design report. That would be submitted to the district. That's a narrative report that describes all of the scope of work and what the improvement is. And that's both architectural and engineering, as well as supporting design documentation of the same. We expect that to be done early this month. We're just putting the fetishy touches on it now. It might be done as early as the end of this week, but I think it'll be probably middle of next week. So we'll submit that to the district for their review and comment. And then we'll get together and have a meeting to talk about anything that needs to be adjusted or revised as we continue into design development. We're scheduled to be done with design development on the 1st of December. Again, the same process will move forward. We'll be presenting those, that information to the district for review. We'll set up a meeting to do what we would call the page turn so that we are all comfortable with where we are at in all of the decisions with respect to what's reflected in the contract documents. Construction documents are set to be complete on March 1st for SED submission. And, you know, given, given the timeframes, we don't recommend doing any kind of outsourced review. It's just going to add cost to the project. And even if we were to submit earlier than this point in time, even the outsourced reviews are taking three to four months. And it's not going to put us in a very good bid window to get things bid, to get things prepped in the start of construction in the summer. So we're going to let it go, our recommendation is to let it go the normal course, let SED take the time and the queue to review it. And then we anticipate compliance, review, and approval sometime around September of 19. That puts us in a very favorable bid schedule. We bid in October, November of 2019. Contractors are putting their work together for the following, for the following year. And we would start construction April, May of 2020 is what I said. But in actuality, some of the work could start earlier than that. Because there's some work that really doesn't relate to the building's proper, you know, generators. Generator for the bus garage, different, different components of the work. We could start early, we can get the shop drawing reviews done, we can get long lead type things ordered. And then they can start in earnest on some of the work even during the end of the school year that are unrelated to or won't have any impact on students and what's going on in the classroom. And then the other work would start, you know, as we trail into the end of the year for the school when the children are released either in early June or late June. And then we would start in fall. And we would anticipate, you know, I always say, I always anticipate being done, I always say November 1st. I mean, we want to be substantially complete as we get back to the new, the new school year. But then there's always closeouts, there's always punch lists, things that we have to do before we actually finalize and do a final cost report. And our target for the final cost report is always, you know, trail end of October. I think there's a deadline actually, if we want to hit it, I think it's October 15th, something like that. So that's the date we would really want to hit. Because then that starts your 18-month cycle for when we're going to hit your building back. And I think that was it.
Is six months realistic for SED approval? I know they're running behind on the last one.
They are, and, you know, it's, I think it's getting better because you're finding that more projects are being removed from the queue, from the queue to go to outsourced reviews because the queue for outsourced reviews is almost empty. So we're hoping that's going to hold in the future. It's kind of crystal ball. You know, we know where they are now, we won't know where they are in December, we won't know where they are in March. But, you know, we're hoping that continues.
So if we got it in early, get early approval, that doesn't keep the front, we can still hold up on bids till the autumn or November?
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, they're two independent things. When you get approval and when you choose to bid is really up to the district's discretion. And certainly hitting a good bid cycle, I think, is important. You start to get into even March, you know, I mean, unless you're taking bids the trailing of January, you know, that's the prime bidding season. You start to get into March and April, you know, contractors are already have their work lined up. And so now you're fighting against, you know, contractors that are already have, already have a busy schedule. So they're going to throw numbers at projects. And you're also, there's a limited pool of workers, of construction workers. And we're seeing that, and we've seen that, and we've seen it hike the prices over and over again. You know, we're finding prices are starting to increase. You know, the report said, you know, 6.8% this year. We've seen bids go up by, you know, 10%, 12% this year. And it's been, it's been pretty extreme.
For materials or labor?
It's been both. And now, we haven't even seen what the impact, true impact is from all of the hurricane season. That's really going to have an impact on certain things. It's going to have that impact on, you know, wood-related projects, drywall. You know, there's going to be a lot of things that are impacted by, by all of the resources that will have to go down and rebuild those areas. And, and, and workers.
Could you explain the comment in the beginning of the job scope about the tennis court being for multi-use? I don't understand what that means.
So when we met and looked at the court, there was some preliminary discussion of if you put different surfaces on the court, what sports could you use it for? So it's very common to have a small turf area so that like your baseball team, or your softball team, or spring sports that you're trying to keep off your athletic fields until the grass actually gets to grow. If you can get them onto that area to, to use that area, it prevents the wear and tear that you'll often see on your spring cycle for your natural turf fields. So it's just a discussion at this point. Until, until we get feedback exactly what sports want to be considered, then we look at what surfaces are going to be finalized for that, so.
So it makes it more, it's a tennis court, but it could also be a multi-use area, a parking area right now.
Right now, it was originally a tennis court area. So there would be a discussion of which sports you really want to have. You're not going to be able to have every type of sport on that surface, it just doesn't work that well.
There was a discussion we had-
Yeah, it's interesting.
-to the support services committee to possibly, you know, continue to use the town courts for tennis and then make that a multi, so it wouldn't be tennis courts, it would be a multi-sport surface so that, you know, winter and even, and spring sports could use that.
PE classes could use it also. And then for winter days, they could wow.
It allows you to get out there earlier. 40 degrees, you can plow the snow off of it. You know, you use a PVC pipe on blade, plow it off.
So we need to solid it?
No, no, turf. It'd be turf.
Artificial turf.
Artificial turf, you can plow it off, then you can, you can have different sports on there that are really tough on fields when they're practicing like lacrosse, you're playing in the spring, that you'd have them do their, all their goal work and stuff on that. So instead of destroying the grass or the turf, they're practicing on that more than they would be on the field until the fields get dried out.
I think it's the right time to do this, look at it, because before we design it, it's a good time to get to see.
Right, right, it's just, I remember it came up as an issue, and it wasn't part of what the voters voted on, like to refurbish the tennis court, because we have the one less than a mile down the road. And I just wanted to make sure that.
And if you were looking to retain these tennis courts, we would probably still be recommending there are newer artificial turf products made actually-
I'm sorry, I totally lost you.
No, if you were looking to retain the tennis courts, there are newer artificial turf products that are actually made to go over tennis courts. And the, and it eliminates a lot of the cracking and the issues that you have with common like hard core or hard root surface of a tennis court. And I know these are now, these are now really, a lot of them are being installed down in Long Island. Long Island has a lot of tennis communities, and this is really taking, taking hold.
This is a rollable mat, it presumably?
You know, I haven't seen the product, I've arranged to have the manufacturer's rep come in. And I, it's something I came across with a few districts that were putting them in. And so I'm curious to see it myself as to just what is the surface. Any other questions from anyone?
Right, I think, I think like Tom initially said, that we do a monthly update.
I think that would be great.
If there's any additional input from board members prior to that, give them to Mr. Miller, superintendent, myself, and we'll pass them on. I think our support service committee will meet periodically to review and give back to the board an update of how the project is progressing. And if there's anything that, you know, that's on your wish list that we might be able to incorporate, you know, let us know. And see what we can do with that.
And you'll be seeing the schematic design report as well. Certainly ask if you have any questions related to that, you know, certainly bring them forward.
Ballpark, Tom, we have an idea. I know the bulk of the project is HVAC upgrades, for the most part, some MEPs there. About six, roughly 6.5 million of physical construction, you know, do you have a percentage of what you think?
I hate to throw out a number, but I'm actually developing-
Ballpark.
I don't remember. I know that there's, it's-
It's a good, it's a good percentage.
It might be 50/50. The front, the work at the front of the building, there was, there was quite a budget put out for the front of the building to address the issues with the bus loop and the paratrophos.
All right.
But I'm developing a cash flow right now, because that's needed for a variety of reasons, including for your financial guidance. And that will help guide the process, project as we move through. So once I get that, once I get that cash flow down, I'll be submitting it to Tom and to Pete. And we can, we can, they can certainly forward it.
Sure. Thank you. Any other questions?
Current capital project is being closed down. So there may be residual dollars left over there?
We're going to ask Lisa that question later on, yeah.
Yeah. And I'm just curious if any of that, like, you know, when you take a look at these and you look at that scope, we know there's usually a variable wiggle room in this.
I was looking at that when Tom was doing the presentation. I mean, we're looking at generators, the bus garage, we're looking at generators at the middle school.
That's what I mean, we knock off from those.
We've, we've got ballpark figures of where those generators should cost from the previous project. So, you know, when Lisa gets into our finances with the project and we can find some monies from the current project, we might be able to-
That's, that's all possibilities, no?
And the other option is we could consider putting some alternates into the package, you know, based upon that. We always like to have some alternates in the package regardless to insulate ourselves on bid day so we can make sure we can move forward with the relevant pieces of work. So I think that's, you know, it's another strategy. And you could also use that if you had some other things you wanted to consider.
What you thought on the alternates, are they D-ducts or Aids?
Well, I always say that they should be Aids. I just, you know, when it's D-duct, I don't think you ever get the-
I don't get the full value.
The, the full value out of it. You know, and a lot of times, you know, when you use Aids alternates, they put a number on it, you know, using it as a strategy to get the, to get the success with it. So you could argue it both ways, you know, but we-
I agree with you.
We typically do it as Aids.
Good. Can I add anything?
Can we just get the presentation out on our E-ducts?
On the board? Can you let me know?
Yeah, we'd like our-
Yes.
Yes, sure, yep, we'll get that. You have that, if you wanted a jump drive, I can leave my jump drive with you.
Or I can email you as well? Okay.
You don't have to give this back to me now, just, it doesn't matter, you can keep it.
One time I don't bring my computer.
And there's a PDF as well as the PowerPoint.
All right, thank you.
All right. Our November meeting is November 13th. November 13th, okay. We have just one meeting in November. Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on with our meeting. First, I'd like to welcome Lisa's board.
Thank you.
Everybody who remembers Lisa Backland, who's been in on the meeting and voted. Lisa's on full mind now and hopefully stay with us and move us in a way financially and continue the good work that our previous commissary have done.
Thank you.
I think, like I, like we mentioned earlier, for me, one of the priority, again, I started to wrap your arm around this.
Yep, we're working on it.
Okay, acceptance of reports. Be resolved, the Board of Education, upon recommendation of superintendent, approved and acknowledged reviewing the following report. Board of Education meeting minutes, September 11th, 2018. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Ed, seconded by Mike. Is there any discussion?
Helen?
There is one item that there are no votes on, so Lisa has updated that.
She's great.
Yes, she is.
Make that direction. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? So carry. Okay, personnel. Are we okay taking personnel as a block from A through B?
Or B?
Taking B.
Four, oh, I'm sorry. Four B. Four B. Four B. And then we'll have a definition.
Yeah.
It's good?
No problem.
Have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, seconded by Heather. Discussion?
Only question was our, under the resignation, that person is going to a bus driver custodian in this district.
Correct. Yes. Correct. He's taking that custodial slash bus driver position. And then, so he has to resign from his bus driver position, which opens up another bus driver position.
Okay.
So we're posting that and we'll be hiring, hopefully, at the, perhaps at the next meeting, of the bus job to replace Mr. Curtis.
Sounds good.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? So carry.
Yes, Mr. President, before and after I just mentioned, we have two of our people. So Javis Burke, Javis, didn't wave. So Javis, he came in, really towards the end of last year, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so he was the fruit of our increased advertising, the, you know, going out on Craigslist, the sign, on that lovely property up there on I W. So, and he's done a fantastic job. We also have Virginia Bezad here. So Virginia is going to be replacing Lauren Ferrari in the elementary school mean office. Welcome both of you.
Thank you.
They have the board, congratulations and go up.
I know they both have a lot of things they're working on. I think Javis is still working on Richard's group. Virginia has some paperwork, so people...
Guys, have a good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. He's sharp. He's great.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, that's right.
He's been fantastic. Yeah.
Okay, unfortunately, our school student rep had a death in the family, so she will not be here this evening. Her business and operations. Budget transfer. Be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of superintendent, approved the following budget transfers for the 2018-19 school year as presented to the board at this meeting. Budget number 2524, $117,743.50. Motion, please? Motion by Mike, seconded by Ed. Discussion?
I believe that is also kind of just getting the monies in the right code or salaries.
All those in favor? All those opposed? So carry. Sarah?
Well, I would like to talk a little bit about the professional development plan, but I think I'll wait until we get to that part of the agenda, just a little bit later. And then, other than that, Tom and I were up at the state superintendents conference early last week. Tom's not talked much about that, but I just wanted to share some of my impressions. It was a great three days. There's a cabinet level group that's there too. So I was able to network and talk with other assistant superintendents around the state, which is a good opportunity. But impressions from the conference, first of all, in every time slot where you were choosing what sessions you were going to go to, social emotional learning was one of the options. So it definitely is a push statewide to look at mental health, to look at social emotional learning. And that really, the final day of the conference, traditionally the commissioner speaks to all the superintendents in the state. And when I was listening to her speak, I really, you really could notice a change in tone from other commissioners or past years. When I went early on and I was in this position, it was John King. He was not warmly welcomed into the group or at the, his words were not warmly welcomed. When, this year, when Mary Ellen Elliott spoke, she probably spoke for about 40, 45 minutes, I'd say, 15 minutes of that. She spoke again about the importance of social emotional learning and really emphasized that if students don't feel a connection to the school or have relationships with people in the school, that learning is not really going to happen in the best kind of atmosphere. So that was, that was a real change. When John King was speaking, you know, he spoke a lot about standards and APPR and it was very adversarial, I would say, with the group. Whereas Mary Ellen Elliott was, spoke much more about teaching and learning and was very, very student-centered discussion really with the superintendents. And part of that made me very proud of the work that we do here in Highland with social emotional learning. You know, the work that we do with PBIS and talking about positive expectations for our students and positive interactions with students, as well as the work that we have done with the Dignity for All Students Act. That made me very happy with the atmosphere that we have created in Highland for our students. So that was one part of it. The second part, she was also talking, I don't know if you're all are aware, but the APPR process, there's been a moratorium on connecting teacher's scores with student's scores on the assessments. Well, that moratorium is up at the end of 2019. So State Ed is looking at what the new APPR is going to look at, or look like. And so she is starting some focus groups around the state. She's listening to all different stakeholders. But she very specifically said that the way that things were rolled out in 2013 now, I think, 2012, 2013, it was too much at one time. Having all the standards new, having the APPR connected to the test, that that wasn't a good situation for students or for teachers. And so she's really looking at, yes, you need to have scores attached to teacher's scores, but 50% is a little extreme. So she's just looking at how we're going to be, what other factors should go into teacher evaluation, looking for feedback. So that was a very positive message, I think. And looking at the superintendents around the room, they really, it seemed, felt reassured by the direction that she was going and the language that she was using. So it was, it was a very different change in the room from what it had been five years ago. So that was, that was one of my biggest takeaways from that time up there. It was, it was a good several days. Again, some interesting new ideas about social emotional learning and ways that schools are trying to identify students for support before it becomes a crisis situation. So we'll be looking at that in districts more. And then, like I said, I'll talk about the professional development and we'll get to that part.
Well, I had, we voted that in in BOSI's last month, the professional development. And I had asked my other colleagues if they had that added up because Chuck said it was mandatory. And so it's great, you're bringing it in.
Finally, I've actually been working on it for a while. I'm glad this one checked off a little bit, but yeah.
Any other questions for Sarah? Tom?
Mr. President. The, I don't know if you caught my Monday message yesterday. That was a good one.
Yeah, what's that?
It was just to be nice to people. I told you rule 52. There's a hundred rules and number 100 is just as important as number one. There's no order to them. So it was just to be nice to people, I told the students, because it goes a long way. And I talked about, they'll find themselves to reach out to people. If you see someone sitting alone in the cafeteria, to invite them over to sit with you or sit with them. So you think, you know, if someone's on the bus alone, to talk to them, be nice to them. Because we all find ourselves in a similar situation at some point in our lives where you'll need a kind word or a smiling face. So that was my message yesterday. And again, I'll continue with these. And I think it would be, it'll be a good avenue to start talking about as we get closer about testing. I'll have specific ones, messages for the parents. So I'll work on a campaign to get closer to the 30-day testing. Very excited. I had talked about this last year, about starting a Highland Alumni Hall of Fame. And the conversation got going off a little late in the year. And there was a lot of things going on, so we didn't get the traction going. But we met again and I am happy to say that the committee has chosen the first two recipients. So the first two initial inductees into the Highland Alumni Hall of Fame. Now this, we will do an official press release once I get a little bit more specific information from our two inductees. But they will be officially inducted at the Snowball in February. So that's February 23rd, the annual Snowball. So part of that event will be inducting our first two alumni. Sarah and I met with one of the inductees on Friday and I spoke to the other inductee on the phone. So, one more, so...
We're announcing them tonight?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna announce them publicly for the first time tonight with some basic information, because I already met with them. They know who, they know they're winning it. So the first recipient from the class of 1981, Dr. Kathy Magliato. So she is one of, if not the, first female cardiothoracic surgeon in the world. Not the United States, in the world. So she's the first female surgeon to perform artificial heart transplants. She founded the Multidisciplinary Women's Health Center at Providence St. John's Medical Center in Santa Monica, California. She was also the author of the book Healing Hearts: Memoir of a Female Heart Surgeon. And this book inspired the NBC television show Heartbeat, where she was also the co-executive producer. So extremely impressive. She is also, happens to be the sister of our guidance counselor at the middle school, named Miss Janice Jensen. So I spoke to Dr. Magliato. Just so happened that Miss Jensen was picking up her sister at the airport on Friday because she has some, you know, business in New York City this weekend. She lives in California, but she is, she will be there, she said, on February 23rd. The other inductee, it was hands down from the class of 1943, Mr. Benjamin Bragg. So I say, in a day and age of the popularity of superheroes and superhero movies, Highland is blessed to have what I call the real deal Captain America. A true American hero, really, in Mr. Bragg. He, of course, was drafted into the United States Army following graduation here in Highland. He served bravely in World War II. And included many of his contributions to war effort. He was certain, he was among the first soldiers that liberated the concentration camps. Returning from World War II, he started his electrician business here in Highland that is still in business today. He has been avid member of the Highland community his entire life, serving as a town councilman. He was captain of the Highland Fire Department. Served as president of the Highland Board of Education. Was recently named a Friend of Education in Olster County and is a leader and inspirational member of the American Legion. Mr. Bragg has served as a source of national pride to generations of Highland students. And his annual visits on Veterans Day and other patriotic holidays serve as an inspiration to our students. And when Dr. Magliato heard that she was being inducted with Mr. Bragg, it made it even more special for her. Because certainly she remembers Mr. Bragg coming to the school. So it's gonna be, like I said, so they received letters. I gave the letters on Friday, where we're asking for some specific information. And then I'll be leading with Holly Brooker and we'll put out an official press release announcing all this.
That's tremendous.
So this will be February 23rd at the Snowball. The Highland Ed Foundation, you know, unanimously voted, so they're going to be funding, because we'll be giving them plaques.
Yeah, absolutely.
So there's a little bit of a cost to this. So the Ed Foundation is gonna, is going to pay for any expenses that we have. And then there will also be announced, probably in about a month, we will also have a Alumni Hall of Fame Pride Award winner. And that will be an award given to either a current or former employee of the district who has made a significant contribution to the, you know, the culture and the community here in Highland. So they won't necessarily, they don't have to be an alumni, but they have to be someone who either previously or currently works in the district. A lot of great things happened. Certainly, it was very, you know, I was touched and very proud to, with Sarah. I'm trying to get speaker Sarah to go to Mr. Bragg's house and meet with him and talk to him about this. It was great. And that's all I have.
Okay, half of the Board of Education, I want to congratulate the both Dr. Magliato and Mr. Bragg. Okay, moving on to new business, the Board of Education. Overnight class trips. Be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, approved the following high school overnight trip for the 2018-19 school year. The Canada trip to Quebec City, November 29th, 2018, to December 1st, 2018. The Washington DC trip, May 3rd, 2019, to May 5th, 2019. And the senior Disney trip, March 30th, 2019, to April 2nd, 2019. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Ed, seconded by Mike.
So we have, you have all the itineraries for these trips. We want to get them just all to you now, so, you know, they can get the approval. I know that they have, for the Disney trip, I think they're, they're starting to kind of get the interest down. They have the most students interested that we've ever had.
Any discussion?
Any fundraising going on for those kids who might not be able to afford?
I think there's supplemental fundraising.
Yeah, a lot of times, like the senior class will raise money and then...
Right. I believe for each of these trips, there's...
Scholarship, there's opportunity.
There's opportunities for students, either through fundraising or scholarships.
The Canada, the French, the United States, helps.
Yeah, and we make sure that kids can get there. Lots of different ways.
Some high participation rates, let you know.
Absolutely.
In the future, if we could try to get these approvals out before the reservations are? I guess it's always my...
That's why I...
They've already taken...
No, they have one.
They've already taken money and everything with you by, or...
The Canada.
For some of them, yeah. So just if we can get the approval out before we actually.
That was the discussion we had.
Right. I came close.
Okay, thank you.
Right, I mean, probably two or three, do it in September.
Yeah.
Right, okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So Carrie. Board of Education policy six one two one. First reading, policy number six one two one, sexual harassment of district personnel. Any discussion?
Just a little background information on that. Most of this, there's new legislation that was passed, so it really required us to look over our existing policy. And so any of the changes that were made were things that were in the new legislation. But the biggest change is that it applies to all employees and agents of the district, so even those working with us as contractors.
Well, do you have the training scheduled?
Well, we've already trained, we did that opening day with most of our staff, existing staff. So what we're working, looking at now is if we can find some sort of an online or a, something that we can do with. Because the other part of it is if we're supposed to have someone hired within, we're supposed to give them training within thirty days of being hired. So we need to, to find some mechanism for making sure that we can do that.
Every, every department's.
Yeah, everyone does.
It's a small business.
Exactly.
BOSI should, should have together a risk management video. OU did it and every four years they update it.
Okay, yeah, that's.
You could play that segment.
Right.
That's my hope, it will, we need to find something, yeah.
Yes.
So you'll be reviewing the agglomeration and typos, because I did detect a couple.
Yes, once you approve, Carly will go through it again with kind of a, with a more fine-tooth comb and.
Great.
Make sure that all of that's there. And it has been, all of that language came from our, our legal counsel.
Do you need a second reading? Or are we comfortable to move it forward now? Do you want to have the time to look at it yet?
Yeah, I think we should make sure it's in proper form.
Yeah.
Well, once we approve it, then it will go back and all those typo corrections we made.
Or do you want, do you want to have us do that now and then you can see?
Yeah, we can. As close to approved as possible, but I, I don't see needing a third really as a result. So we'll move to a second. Okay, Board of Education policy eight two seven one, first reading, internet safety, internet content filtering.
This is actually a new policy for us. It's elements that we had in other policies, but we need for our new, our technology plan that will be taken in the state by the end of the month, we need to have this specific policy in place. So this was, we got most of the language from Erie One BOSI's. I sent it to legal review and they, I mean.
Yeah, it looks good. I, I've read through both of them, I'm familiar with both. And does the job. The rest, you know, it was covered in acceptable use policies, things like that, important for students that sign up.
Do you prefer to a lot of working procedures, so we have them all in place? Okay.
Okay.
We'll move this one also to a second reading.
Yeah, because there's still that agitation.
Although it's not unusual for first to adopt a policy and then administrative regs on how to carry out that policy come after. Just procedure.
Okay, Highland Central School District Professional Development Plan two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty. Be resolved, Board of Education upon a recommendation of superintendent approves the Highland Central School District Professional Development Plan two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty presented to the board at this meeting. Sarah?
So this is something that we need to have by, by regulation. It's, I will be submitting it to, to the state. We'll also have it available on our website. I send it to you in two parts. The first part really goes through the process, that mostly goes through the process of how we created the committee, who we talked to, all that kind of thing. And then another, another thing we have to happen there is our mentoring program and what the mentoring program looks like and who's involved and what the processes we're choosing. That's a requirement of the professional development plan. So that's really what part one is for the most part. And then the second part, to me, the more interesting part, is part two. And what we did for part two is I broke it down into, I think, about six different goals. They're not really in any specific order. All of them are things that we're working on. The big, one of the important things about the professional development plan is that we need this in place in order for our teachers to be able to use the professional development that we offer to fulfill their, their certification needs. They have to have a hundred hours every five years. Fifteen of those hours need to be in ENL, or English as a New Language Training. TAs also, level three TAs, have the same requirement. So this allows us to be a provider of that. They have to get it from a state-approved provider and by having our professional development plan. You know, anything that we do on a superintendent's conference day or any of that kind of thing can work here. The goals that I've laid out here are things that we've been working on for the most part since I started in this position. And, and most of them are goals that in some ways will never be, you know, we will never really check them off the list because standards are always changing and we're always, we're always looking at the standards and seeing how we can better meet those standards or, you know, they evolve as we go through time, so that was goal one. Core literacy for all students, again, we're constantly improving that. The third one that I have on here is core math skills, again, continually working on that. The creation of the STEM program. While that's very new in some respects for the high school, that is work that we have been doing and will continue to expand upon social-emotional learning, ENL, and integration of technology and inquiry learning. So none of these are things that are probably going to fall off of the, the goals or the list at any point in time. And then what I did underneath is more specifically, if we're looking at standards, we're looking at, there are the next generation ELA in math standards. There's new science standards, which I've mentioned several times. There's new social studies standards, there are now new standards in arts. So it really is continuing to align our standards both horizontally across a grade level as well as vertically between grade levels. Again, this is work that we've been doing for quite some time, but needs constant, constant revamping and looking. The core literacy skills, continuing the work with Teachers College, both in readers' and writers' workshop at the elementary school, introducing a phonics program at the elementary school to supplement readers' workshop. We talked last meeting about the sustained silent reading program. Chris Parker spoke about that. The students did have a contest to rename the program from Something Beyond SSR. And I, I was speaking with the eighth grade today and they decided it's going to be Just Read It, much like Just Do It. And I can, Just Read It is going to be the name of their program. So that's exciting and fun that the students, students brought that up. And then math, really looking, continuing to look at those benchmark assessments that we have created in both the elementary and the middle school, making sure that they're aligning to the state standards as well as the state assessments. And looking at that math lab that we started at the high school to help our students with that LTRA one. And then that's this year, possibly next year, looking at our geometry. Because we really want to make sure that the students, they only need, they only have to have one math regions exam to graduate. We encourage students to take at least three if we can, but, but as far as accountability goes, we need to have them do well on that one. So we're continuing to work on that. And then the STEM program. And I, I keep getting questions about why I'm saying STEM rather than STEAM because there's two, there's two different directions that people have gone with that. And one of the reasons I'm really talking about STEM specifically for us is that we've talked at the high school about it being computer science, you know, that being really a big thrust that we have for the STEM program. And so I'm keeping it STEM. We do, however, integrate technology across the board into all areas, including the arts. So, so it's not that we're not doing STEAM in other places, but, but specifically the STEM program is really about building that computer science and that engineering aspect of STEM. Social-emotional learning, there are new mental health standards that are going into effect this year, so we're doing more work at looking at those K-12. We do a lot of work, not only, not only in areas where you expect, like health or maybe PE. We're also doing some work in content areas in elementary school classrooms. That's where our Too Good for Drugs, the Second Step Program that Chris and Candia, our guidance counselor for the elementary schools, spoke about last year. That's all part of social-emotional learning. So then we're continuing our opioid, opioid drug awareness programs, that's part of social-emotional learning as well. And of course, digging for all students in PDIS. And then that last one is educational technology strategies and that inquiry-based learning, process-based learning. We've done a lot of work within the district. And next meeting, you will have our draft technology plan that falls in with that, that these two overlap quite a bit. But we're also excited about some new options, some new people coming to speak at BOSI's. One of those, one of the big ones is High Tech High, which is actually a charter school in San Diego that was started about twenty years ago, I believe. It's a little bit of a misnomer. It is about technology, but it really is about process or project-based learning. They have now, they have one high, I think it's one high school, a couple of middle schools, as well as several elementary schools. Ulster BOSI's is doing a partnership with them. Parallel, they're working with the P-Tech program, the Pathways program through Ulster BOSI's, but they're also offering districts the ability, the opportunity to come and do some trainings, two in October and two in April. So we have some pairs of teachers that are going from our middle school as well as our high school to look at that process. And we have some specific directions that we want to think about or look around. So that's, that's one area. Paul Anderson, who is a kind of a rock star in the science teacher world, he talks a lot about the next generation standards, but again, talking about wonder and inquiry and thinking. He, he really goes to the science standards and goes through the science practices and helps teachers look at discovery in science more so than going through prescribed step-by-step recipes for a lab or things like that. And then the last one is Harvey Silver, Silver and Strong really, but Harvey Silver. We had in Highland, Silver and Strong, we had, it was when I was first teaching here, so probably.
Early two thousands.
Yeah, the two thousands.
Late two thousand three.
Yeah, he was at our summer, the summer leadership conference early in June. But BOSI's is bringing them back for teachers and he also has what he called, I think it's the four columns of inquiry. And so we're going to be sending some teachers to that as well. So we should have some very much conversation about really thinking about our classrooms and how we help students learn more. So that's all embedded in, in this professional development plan. I'm very proud of the work that we've already done in these directions, but excited about the direction that we're going as well.
You had mentioned way in the beginning that teachers have to have fifteen credit hours per year?
Um, do, every five years. It's every five years.
Fifteen, you're, fifteen hours?
No. It's a hundred hours. Every five years. Every five years and fifteen of those need to be in ENL strategies.
Oh, okay, okay. Do you, do you have a mechanism in place to track that or?
Well, there's, that's kind of interesting. In the past, everything was done through our online My Learning Plan, which is how we register for BOSI's courses. You can also put district things in there as well. And we, as a district, used to, used to submit that to the state. Where they're, they used to have a hundred and seventy-five hours that they had to do, but you could count a lot of different things. With this change to one hundred hours, the responsibility is really on the teacher to manage. So they're still using My Learning Plan and that is a place to go back to. But it is, the state potentially.
So they'll track it?
If they're, if you're ever asked, you have to prepare.
It's almost like an audit kind of situation. So it could be that the state would say, Sarah Dudley Lemick, we want to see the hundred hours that you've done in the last five years. Or they might not ask me at all.
So it's not a burden on the district?
Correct.
No, until they don't do it. It kind of makes me nervous, actually.
I think a little, because if they don't do it, then, then what?
Yeah, I'd, I'd rather, and it's also, you're kind of grandfathered into it though. So like, if I was still in the classroom, I wouldn't have to do the hundred hours. Because if it was, I don't remember the exact year, if you got your certification probably right around two thousand five, two thousand six, somewhere around there, you're grandfathered in, you don't have to do those hundred hours. If it's after that, you do. And it's also for administrators, administrators and level three TAs. So, yeah, so we're, we're trying to keep track the best we can, just so that we're a little bit of a backup in case someone gets audited or. Yeah, because, you know, that's going to be messy.
They're getting paid, so we have to track it because of the monetary.
Yeah, if it's outside of their hours.
Ultimately is on, because they would say, well, you know, you have to do these things to maintain your certification. And you have a duty to maintain your certification.
Which I think is pretty consistent with other professions as well.
Yeah, yeah, that's with the lawyers, it's that serious stuff.
Sarah, in the same vein, in that first part, you spoke about the mentoring program. Again, how is that, how do we track that, that our mentors?
We use My Learning Plan for that and they have monthly logs that they submit to. We have a mentor coordinator who goes through those logs. We have, there's a meeting once a month that the mentor and the mentee attend. They also have professional development times throughout the year. So they're, we're, that one, we're, we're very on top of what they're doing. On top of that, I meet with the, each of the new teachers at least twice a year separately, just kind of one-on-one to check in. And so, and, and I meet with the mentor coordinator to talk about what they're presenting to the teachers in their monthly meetings. So, you know, we want our, we want our new people to be successful, so we try to support them.
And I know we, we approved the stipend for mentors earlier on in the, in the year. I'm kind of thinking the number of five or six mentors we approved. I mean, do we have enough new teachers to fill those positions?
Yes, we only, you only, you only approve mentors who have a mentee. Yes, yes, it's all just based.
I didn't see the name, I don't recall the name, but maybe they were the names.
Well, it might not have, we might not have on the agenda, we probably didn't put who they were mentoring.
Right, we just put the name.
No, we just, yeah, we just.
So they all have.
They all have someone they're mentoring, yes. And in some cases, there's even provision, if we don't get enough, well, people who want to be mentors, we've had people who have mentored two. There's a provision for that in my contract as well.
Late we've had more than.
Late we, it's been great, we've had more than, than we needed, which is fantastic. And we definitely have discussions about who the mentors are and, you know, what they're good, you know, we try to pair people who are in the same building and, or in the same department, you know, if we can.
Any other questions? We didn't make a motion, can I have a motion for the adoption of the professional development plan? Motion with a header, second by Tom. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any one opposed? So Carrie, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Okay, on their whole business, administrative retreat.
So we talked about that a couple of weeks ago. What I'll do is, this is just a reminder, I will send some dates out to the board. We don't have to worry about the, you know, where we're doing, but really just we need to get a date. So I'll send some dates out to you. It might be, you know, during the week, you know, it might be a normal time, a board meeting, but just on a separate night of.
You said we're only meeting once in November?
Right, it could be November and just, you know, November on, on a Tuesday night, so it's kind of the normal time.
Is that better for people on Tuesday or do you tend to have those eight?
We're meeting on the second Tuesday in November.
Thirteen.
We have the first and the third.
Right.
And the third would be Tuesday, fourth Thanksgiving.
Right. Let's see, have the, the sixth.
Election, right.
Doesn't have to be a Tuesday, probably.
No.
So just the thirteenth is the only meeting. So I'll throw out some dates in November, November might be a good time.
Tuesday's for Wednesdays?
Is there a night that, they locked, is there a night that, a special TV night that you don't diss anybody?
That's right, there's no football on Wednesday.
That's right, there's no football on Wednesday.
Oh, yeah, football Thursday.
Friday, date night.
Monday. It won't be Friday. All right, so maybe Monday or Wednesday, I'll look at that and I'll look at my own calendar and we'll look at that. Great.
Okay, Ulster County School Board's official meeting.
That's next week, yep, so this, I'll be going to that.
Yes, I know Tom will be.
So if anyone else is going to go, just let us know. That's the next.
Yeah, I'm going, but I'm, I'm Boce's, I'm in, I'm at their table.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Oh.
Is this the Mingmo Ming's?
No, 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 oh, this is also, oh, I'm sorry, this is wrong meeting.
That is the thing that tickles.
Well, it's Ulster County School.
Yes, yeah, 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 I'm, I'm going, yeah, I'm going.
Is there anybody else, because I was going to E N L Sheila tomorrow?
I'm thinking a wrong dinner meeting.
Okay.
I think it's eleven, it's eleven, right?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yes, Lisa.
Thank you.
Okay, that's just FYI. Under miscellaneous, Board of Ed's policy six one one zero. We've already approved that and that.
Yeah, I just, it was something that came up on our wellness or with the food services audit. For some reason, they didn't find it when they originally went through it. So I, we found it, I sent it to legal, just, it hadn't been reviewed since like two thousand two or two thousand four, so I sent it to legal just to have them look over it.
Like most of our policies.
And, and so she looked it over, said there was no significant change. So we just wanted to let, so there's no need to re-approve anything, but I just wanted to let you know it hadn't looked at. We put on the thing that it was reviewed in two thousand eighteen, but just so you're aware.
But, but I know we have a discussion.
It's the person, it's a procurement, I think.
Yes, procurement helped it. I know the previous meetings, Sarah, we mentioned about from our, our former legal team used to sign off on with whoever reviewed it and put the date down. I know you mentioned that our new firm doesn't want to, so, I mean, I'm looking.
An individual, they, I think.
So, but I think we need to have whatever their initials are or whoever we're going to call them at our legal meeting that was reviewed by Waxman dated October two thousand eighteen. Because legally, I mean, they could say there's nothing wrong with it and it comes back and, and, and bites us.
But they don't mind putting with the firm.
That's fine, they put the firm, I'm okay, but if they remain, I don't know they reviewed it.
For liability issue. In the end, if there is an issue, it will stop, so.
Yeah, absolutely, but I want, we need a little protection.
We got you.
They don't want to put an individual's name at least.
We got to leave the firm, okay.
Okay, awards dinner for yours truly.
Yes.
Sitting in the audience.
All right, so this is the Men Hudson Study Council Ward honoring Dr. Michael Pfaff and another individual. Not to be dated this time, do I get in trouble? I'm already in trouble.
How about that?
So, we need to know by October fifth if you intend on going. Because we have to write just a single check.
What's that for date?
October eighteenth is the date.
October eighteenth.
R S U P, October fifth.
October eightheenth.
Thursday.
Where is it?
It's a very nice affair.
It is very nice and it'll be great. Yeah, it's, it is big. I couldn't think of two more deserving people.
Absolutely not. Andy.
So we have to.
They do have to give a speech.
Oh, and. And they got, they got something that comes up out of the floor.
They do not.
Oh, yeah, I like that, I see that.
Yeah.
Oh, God.
That's, that's all.
Okay, so just remember, you are attending that, get something back to Tom.
To Lisa or to Farla?
Right, Farla, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yep. All right, anything for the good and welfare of the district?
I just wanted to thank Pete Miller for taking us around today. I thought the buildings looked fantastic. They did for the opening day of school and they still do, so Peter, thank you and your staff. Looks good. Excited for this next capital project to build some of the gaps.
Okay, any else? Open a meeting up the public comment. Yes, Mark?
I just wanted to, Tom, a question about the Hall of Fame. Is there, after the awards happen, is there a section of the school where the?
So they'll be, right, so the recipients will receive two plaques. So there'll be two plaques made. They'll, one for the recipient to keep and then one with their photograph on it and then a brief description and their name. And we will be designating a particular wall in the high school, still to be named, a wall yet to be named, where it's a prominent spot and that will be the Alumni Hall of Fame.
There will be an annual thing, you think?
It'll be an annual thing, yep.
Thanks.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, no, it's thank you.
Anybody have any need for an executive session this time? Okay, so entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Tom, seconded by Heather. All those in favor?
Aye.
So, thank you all.
Thank you.